Good evening, welcome to Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center and our week, mid-week Bible study. I am Bishop Jim Logan, and I am pleased to greet you tonight. We are filming from a different place tonight, but we're delighted to welcome you online with us. If you would do me a favor right now and immediately share this broadcast, this live stream, with your friends, or even better, start a watch party, so that we can bring others into this viewing experience. I'm grateful to have you with me tonight, and I'm also glad to have Lady Cece with me off-screen, who's helping to run our equipment for us tonight. So if you would do those couple things for me right away, so that we can bring some other people in to this broadcast tonight. I'm glad that you are here, and I want to encourage you to follow along with us tonight, with your bottles or with your handheld devices. Alright, we're doing things a little bit differently tonight. We're going to get the slides up on air for you in just a moment, so bear with us as we are figuring all of this out. We don't have all the equipment where we're streaming from tonight, as we would if we were at the church. So let me have a word of prayer with us as we get started tonight. Father, I thank you and I bless you for this privilege and this opportunity to study in your Word. Lord, I thank you for what we discover in the tabernacle and the wilderness. I thank you for the value and meaning that is in it for us. And Lord, as we go through all of the various aspects of its construction and the meaning of it all, Lord, would you illumine us, so that we will see revelation in the midst of it, as we seek to deal with our own sin and celebrate our salvation. And we do bless you and praise you for it, in Jesus mighty name. Now God has, your people are coming online. Bless us, we pray, that as we study, we might prove ourselves as work persons, having no need to be ashamed. And we ask it all in the name of Jesus, amen. Alright, let's get started tonight, shall we? In the last few weeks, this is actually our fifth week, but it's our session four. I took a couple weeks for the last section. It's probably going to take a couple weeks for this session tonight. But to this particular point, as we have been talking about the tabernacle, we talked about the setting for the tabernacle. Then from the setting of the tabernacle, we talked about its purpose. And after we did that, we went on to talk about its actual construction and the pattern that God gave to Moses for it on the mountaintop. We finished that last week, and so I want to move us forward now to talk about the structure itself, the actual tabernacle itself. And I'm not going to read all the foundational scriptures tonight. That takes quite a bit of time to do that. But note that if you want to know more about the tabernacle, you can read about it in the Book of Exodus, from about chapter 26 through chapter 38. Maybe a little bit further as well, and it will give you all the specifications. I'm going to throw a lot of scripture at you tonight, and so I invite you to keep your bibles handy. We will do our best to put scripture up on the screen as we go along. As we get started tonight, one of the things that I've already been talking about a little bit, but you're going to hear me say it quite a number of times tonight, as we talk about measurements, is a biblical measurement called a cubic, a cubit. That's C-U-B-I-T, a cubit. And just so that you will have a reference, a cubit is generally accepted to be approximately twenty-one and a half inches. So every one cubit is twenty-one and a half inches. And we will talk about that at great length. If you would just move the slide forward, so I can see what text I put up. Alright. Okay, alright, I'm going to go past those scriptures. So let me, let me just jump into this right now and talk about the scriptural specifications for the tabernacle itself. The dimensions of the enclosure, and I'm going to try to do something here on my phone to help out a little bit, is one hundred cubits long, now keep in mind, a cubit is twenty-one and a half inches long. Is one hundred cubits long, fifty cubits wide, and five cubics high. Let me say that again. That's approximately one hundred cubits long, and fifty cubits wide, and five cubics high. I'm going to try to go past all of these scripture references, so I could put, get this on the screen for you. Alrighty, hanging with there with these people, and I'll get this up there for you right away. Okay, gotta go forward. Okay, see if you can move the verses way ahead here. Just keep going until you get to the next slide. Now, a hundred cubits long is approximately a hundred and eighty feet. I think that that'd be the next slide that you come to, once you get past the scripture, is the one of measurements. And that makes it, the fifty cubits wide makes it ninety feet wide, and the five cubits high make it nine feet high. Nine feet high. Now, I don't know if you have a sense of how big that is, but nine feet high does not make it very tall. In most of our houses nowadays, okay, right there. In most of our houses nowadays, the ceilings are only about, what, nine to ten feet high at the most? And I'm kind of looking at my ceiling here, maybe ten feet at the most. So it wasn't very tall. And so if you can figure, think about how high your ceiling is, that, that times, what is that, times twenty, basically gives you how long it was. Now, you'll see on the screen that I have that for you, that it, its measurements. Then it contained sixty pillars, sixty pillars, sixty chapiters. Now chapiter is a silver cap that went on the top of the pillar. And then sixty brass sockets. In addition to that, next slide, in addition to that, it had one hundred cords, a hundred, excuse me, a hundred and twenty cords, and brass pins. It had sixty silver fillets, a fillet is a connecting bar. And then it had fourteen hundred square cubits, or two thousand five hundred and eight square feet of fine twined linen. This does not include, however, the, does not include the curtains that were part of the gate. So that, those were the dimensions. When you come to the description of the enclosure, the courtyard was, of the tabernacle was an uncovered area. It was surrounded by a curtain of fine twined linen. It was attached by silver hooks to sixty pillars. These are the same sixty pillars that I just listed. Now the pillars themselves were more than likely made of acacia or sheedum wood. They had silver caps. Remember, the silver cap was called a capiter, or chapiter rather, and then fitted into the sixty brass sockets, which were then buried in the sand. The silver connecting bars kept the pillars equidistant from each other, and then they were held upright in one place by cords, excuse me, by cords and brass pegs. Now that's just a description. You might be well wondering, well, what does that all mean? Well, that takes me to the spiritual significance. Because the spiritual significance of this, remember that everything is a shadow and a type referencing Jesus Christ. So as it relates to Jesus and to us, there are seven matters of importance, and each of those seven things has a spiritual significance that deserves our attention. So the first of the seven is the linen. And the linen was fourteen hundred square cubits. Remember, I gave that to you already, or two thousand five hundred and eight square feet. The linen speaks of righteousness. Righteousness that is imparted by God to us through Jesus Christ. So when we look in Revelation, chapter nineteen, verse eight, we will read these words. "It was given to her to clothe herself in fine linen, bright and clean, for the fine linen is the righteous acts of the saints." And then First Corinthians, chapter one, verse thirty says, "But by his doing you are in Christ Jesus, who became to us wisdom from God and righteousness and sanctification and redemption." You see, it's not our righteousness, we have no righteousness. But as Isaiah sixty-four and six says, it is instead the righteousness of Jesus. This is what Isaiah says, "For all of us have become like one who is unclean, and all our righteous deeds are like a filthy garment, and all of us wither like a leaf, and our iniquities, like the wind, take us away." So we don't have any righteousness. All our righteousness is as filthy rags. But the righteousness of Jesus, Jesus who himself was holy and harmless and undefiled, who was separate from sinners, it is His righteousness. Hebrews, chapter seven, verse twenty-six says this, "For it was fitting for us to have such a high priest, holy, innocent, undefiled, separated from sinners, and exalted above the heavens." So the linen speaks to righteousness, but not our righteousness. It is the righteousness of God through Jesus Christ. But the linen even goes beyond that. The linen also points to us as believers, who in our witness to the outside world, Philippians three nine says this, "And may be found in him, not having a righteousness of my own derived from the law, but that which is derived, which is through faith in Christ, the righteousness that comes from God on the basis of faith." So the linen also points to our witness to the outside world. Because our witness in the outside world is pointing to Jesus. Our duty before God and the rest of humanity is, according to what Titus tells us, is to deny ungodliness and worldly lusts, and to live soberly, righteously, and godly in this present world. You see, that's the purpose for which we have been redeemed. Did you get that? We have been redeemed, according to what Paul says, to deny ungodliness and worldly desires, and to live sensibly, righteously, righteously, and godly in this present age. So that's what the linen represents. But then the second thing that deserves our attention are the pillars. Now, as I already said, the pillars were more than likely made of acacia or sheedum wood. Remember that these are both woods that are not easily defiled. They don't rot very easily, they, they're very durable. So they were probably made of acacia or sheedum wood, and they speak of the humanity of Jesus. Luke, chapter one, verse thirty-five says this, "The angel appeared and said to her, 'The Holy Spirit will come upon you, and the power of the Most High will overshadow you, and for that reason the Holy Child shall be called the Son of God.'" Acts, chapter two, verse thirty-three says these words, I mean thirty-one, excuse me, says these words, "He looked ahead and spoke of the resurrection of the Christ, that he was neither abandoned to Hades or hell, nor did his flesh suffer decay." So the acacia or the sheedum wood speaks to the humanity of Jesus. It was not possible for his body to see corruption. But further than that, it also speaks again, just like the linen speaks of us, so the pillars speak of us as believers, who have been cut off from the outside world, shaped and fashioned to become a pillar in the house of God. Did you catch that? As believers, we have been cut off from the outside world. Remember, the subtitle of this study is Sin and Salvation. We are sinners, but God provided for us salvation. And part of that salvation, when, once we truly have been saved, we now acknowledge that we have been cut off, cut off, from the outside world, shaped and fashioned to become a pillar in the household of God. Look, look what Paul says to his son in the ministry, Timothy, in First Timothy three fifteen. He says, "But in case I am delayed, I write to you, I write so that you will know how one ought to conduct himself in the household of God, which is the church of the living God, the pillar and supporter of the truth." You and I have been made to be pillars in the household of God. So the linen and the pillars, but then a third thing of note are the sockets. Now remember, there were, if you remember this now, there, there were sixty pillars, there were sixty brass sockets, and I'll get to the chapiters in a moment. But the sixty brass sockets, the fact that they were brass, they, they speak of perfect endurance in the fires of judgment. Perfect endurance. Revelation, chapter one, verse fifteen talks about the enduring obedience of Jesus. It says, "His feet were like burnished bronze." That's, that's another description of brass, another translation would say brass. "When it has been made to blow in a furnace, and his voice was like the sound of many waters." So the pillars were fitted into these sockets that were put into the ground. Remember that you and I are pillars, and as pillars, we have to be fixed or characterized by steadfast endurance. Philippians, chapter four, verse one, Paul writes these words. "Therefore, my beloved brethren, whom I long to see, my joy and crown in this way stand firm in the Lord, my beloved." Now, now the sockets, they, they were rooted in, they were put into the ground, so they were to be firm in the ground, but we are to be firm in Christ. First Corinthians, chapter fifteen, verse fifty-eight. Paul says, "Therefore, my beloved brethren," this is a verse I love, "be steadfast, immovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord, knowing that your toil or your labor is not in vain in the Lord." You see, as pillars, we have to be fixed or characterized by steadfast endurance. We don't want to be like James describes, a ship without a rudder that is double-minded, because we're constantly going from here to there, never grounded, never steadfast. We want to be fixed, we want to be fixed. A fourth consideration for us are the chapiters themselves. Remember, there's sixty of these. Now the chapiters were silver caps that were attached on the top of each of those sixty pillars. Now, interestingly enough, the silver that was used for the caps had been melted down from the redemption money. If you remember, a couple weeks ago, we were talking about the redemption money. Every man twenty years old and older had to pay a half shekel for the ransom of his soul. And so Exodus, chapter thirty, verses twelve through sixteen, just as a reminder, we read this before, "When you take a census of the sons of Israel to number them, then each one of them shall give a ransom for himself to the Lord when you number them, so there will be no plague among them when you number them." And then the next verse says, "This is what everyone who is numbered shall give, half a shekel according to the shekel of the sanctuary. The shekel is twenty geras, half a shekel as a contribution to the Lord. Everyone who is numbered from twenty years old and over shall give the contribution to the Lord. The rich shall not pay more, and the poor shall not pay less than the half shekel, when you give the contribution to the Lord to make atonement for yourselves. You shall take the atonement money from the sons of Israel, and shall give it for the service of the tent of meeting." You shall take the atonement money from the sons of Israel and shall give it for the service of the tent of meeting. That it may be a memorial for the sons of Israel before the Lord to make atonement for yourselves. So s- that that's the silver that they had to bring. But that silver has meaning. The silver speaks ever and always of our redemption. And therefore, because our redemption or our salvation is through Jesus. It speaks to the captive of our salvation, who is Jesus. So if you re- if you remember, just a few moments ago, we were talking about the brass sockets. The brass sock, uh that's. Let me spit it out. The brass sockets speak of endurance in judgment. But now the silver caps or the silver chapiters, they speak of the experience of salvation. You see, in all of our witness to Jesus. We must see that we do not neglect the so great a salvation. That the writer of Hebrews talks about Hebrews chapter two, verse three. How will we escape if we neglect so great a salvation? After was at the first spoken through the Lord, it was confirmed to us by those who heard. So in all of our witness to Jesus, we must see that we do not neglect so great a salvage, the so great a salvation. Which God has made available to us through his wondrous grace. Now, connected with the pillars and the chapiters. And even uh the 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 sockets. Are the the silver connecting bars. Remember, as we talked about the silver bars. There were sixty silver fillets or connecting bars. As we look at the connecting bars, the the significance of them. Is that in our redemption, I I want you to get this. We are connected one to the other. Our fellowship is with one another. So re- remember the 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 silver, the silver bars. Kept the pillars equidistant from each other. And were held erect by cords and brass pegs. So the silver connecting bars is what connects, we- remember, we're the pillars. So the 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 connecting bars are connecting the pillars one to another. In our redemption, we're connected to one another. First John chapter one, verse seven says, but if we walk in the light, as he himself is in the light. We have fellowship with one another. And the blood of Jesus, his son cleanses us from all sin. Isn't that good to know that we are connected to each other? But in addition to the silver connecting bars, there was also the silver hooks. Now the silver hooks is what held up the curtains. Well, you ought to be able to figure this one out on your own. Jesus himself had to be held up. Romans chapter three, verse twenty-five, we read these words. Whom God displayed publicly as a propitiation in his blood through faith. This was to demonstrate his righteousness. Because in the forbears of God, he passed over the sins previously committed. First Corinthians chapter two, verse two. Paul writes, for I determined to know nothing among you except Jesus Christ and him crucified. So you have the silver connecting bars, but you also have the silver hooks. Let's let's come to a further consideration. And that is in the pegs. Now, the pegs, remember how many pegs there were? There were. If you remember now, how many pegs were there? A hundred and twenty. One hundred and twenty pegs. Each peg, this is sort of like a a nail. It was made of brass and driven into the ground, so so not a small nail, but. I guess maybe it's better to, better to call it like a tent peg. And it was driven into the ground, made of brass. Remember brass again represents endurance through judgment. Now it wasn't completely buried. I don't know how many of you have ever pitched a tent before. When when you pitch a tent and you 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 you've got stabilizing cords that you you stretch out. And then you use pegs to secure those lines in the ground. You don't bury the pegs completely. But they are sort of half buried. And the half buried peg represents also the fact that Jesus went down to death. But he rose up again. So the peg that is in the ground or the portion of the peg that is in the ground. Symbolizes his death. Uh you can guess the other part. The peg that is above the ground suggests his resurrection. So Romans chapter six, verse five says, for if we have become united with him. In the likeness of his death. Certainly, we shall also be in the likeness of his resurrection. Now the Bible calls these tent pegs nails or stakes. Isaiah gives us a direct reference to Jesus calling it a nail. In Isaiah chapter twenty-two, verses twenty-three and twenty-four. I will drive him like a peg in a firm place. And he will become a throne of glory to his father's house. So they will hang on him all the glory of his father's house, offspring. And issue all the least of vessels, from bowls to all the jars. So there's the pegs. The the last piece for us to consider here. Uh as it relates to Jesus and ourselves, as a matter of importance, are the cords. Now remember, there were a hundred and twenty pegs, but there were also a hundred and twenty cords. Each of these cords was attached to the pegs. And they were used for securing the pillars of the outer enclosure. Now the cords themselves speak of the infinite love of Jesus. We just celebrated on the fourteenth a worldly holiday, but called Valentine's Day. But for us, we celebrated the love of God, the agape love. So the 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 cords speak of agape love. Look at Hosea chapter eleven and verse four. I led them with cords of a man with bonds of love. And I became to them as one who lifts the yoke from their jaws. And I broke and I bent down and fed them. Galatians chapter two and verse twenty. I have been crucified with Christ. And it is no longer I who live, but Christ lives in me. The life which I now live in the flesh, I live by faith in the Son of God who loved me. And gave himself up for me. And then one last verse for on this, first John, chapter four, verse nineteen. We love because he first loved us. So the cords speak of the infinite love of Jesus. You see, you have to remember that it is only the constraining love of Jesus. That keeps us, that keeps you and me standing up and down, standing erect in our witness. And also anchored to a life of endurance. So there's great symbolism, as you can see, in the pieces. That were attached or part of the curtained enclosure. But let me move from talking about the curtained enclosure. And we're gonna dig deeper into this as we go along. And so at times it will sound a little bit repetitive to you. I wanna move now to talk about the central structure. Um the tabernacle itself. The tabernacle itself. It's also, this is, this is also known. Or or rather, it's 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 part of, it's inside the court or the courtyard. So the the tabernacle itself, in terms of its dimensions. It was thirty cubits long. A hundred cubits wide. Remember, a cubit, it equals twenty-one and a half inches. Twenty-one and a half inches. So thirty cubits long or fifty-four feet long. Ten cubits wide or eighteen feet wide. Ten cubits high or eighteen feet high. There were one hundred silver sockets. I I I guess I need to pause for a moment to say. What we had been talking about before we we got to this particular portion. Was the outer court. The outer court had no roof, no ceiling on it. It almost was like a big fence that surrounded the enclosure of the tabernacle. We're now talking about the tabernacle itself that was comprised of walls and a ceiling. And it had, its dimensions were eighteen feet. Uh wide fif- eighteen feet high and fifty-four feet long. It was comprised of one hundred silver sockets. Forty-eight boards, each of which was ten by one and a half cubits or eighteen feet by three feet. Fifteen bars, ten curtains, fifty tashes or clips. One hundred blue loops. And all that was included in the materials for the tabernacle. So let's, let me describe it for you. I didn't include a bat for you tonight, but uh this tabernacle. If you visualize a rectangular outer court. This enclosure stood on the west side of the court. Directly in line with the gate. It had a solid framework that was composed of forty-eight boards. Twenty on the north, twenty on the south, and eight on the west, including two corner boards. And tha- now the reason why there's a a smaller number of boards on the west. Is the west was the entrance into the outer court. It was the only way in or out. And so there were fewer boards there because it was open. The boards were made of acacia wood. Remember acacia wood, sheedum wood, the same thing. Now the difference here is that these boards were overlaid with gold. And then each of these boards had two feet or tenins, they were called. That were inserted into ninety silver sockets. Two sockets for each board. So visualize this now. There were twenty boards on the north, twenty on the south, eight on the west. And each of these had two sockets. Now, check this out. This blew my mind when I went back to review this. Each socket weighed approximately. Each socket weighed approximately. Five and a half, uh I'm sorry, weighed a hundred and twenty-five pounds. Which when you put it all together, there were ninety of them. Came to something like five and a half tons. Now I I want you to wrap yourself around this. I had a tough time wrapping myself around this. Remember how we talked about they in the wilderness. They would follow a pillar of cloud by day that glowed like fire at night. Whenever it stopped, they would stop and they would make camp. Whenever it moved, they would break camp and they would follow. The tabernacle was just one part of the encampment. The Levites, different families had different responsibilities for it. We'll talk about that a little bit later on. But imagine now having to pack up all of this. And just the ninety, ninety sockets of silver. Weighed five and a half tons. Can you imagine what that would have been like trying to move that through wilderness? Now just think about that for a moment. Now, the bars were held together, or excuse me, the boards, not the bars. The boards were held together by fifteen bars. And each of the bars were overlaid with gold. And they were on the three sides of the tabernacle. The bars passed through a series of rings that were on the boards. So on the east side of the tabernacle, there was a door made of fine twined linen. Remember there's a wall on the west, north and the south, but on the east side, there was a doorway made of fine twined linen. Embroidered in blue, purple, and scarlet. And the fine twined linen was suspended on five pillars. Each of which rested on a socket of brass. Now, there was a veil of the exact same size, same material, and same color. That was the veil that separated in the enclosure. There were only two rooms in the enclosure, the holy place and the most holy place. So there was this veil that was the same size as the doorway. That was made of fine twined le- linen. There was a veil that was exactly like that doorway, except that on it. It had beautifully embroidered cherubim. And it was hung on four pillars. Remember the doorway was hung on five. It was hung on four pellet pillars and set in sockets of silver, uh silver. Now, the veil was the partition, like I said, between the two rooms of the tabernacle, the holy place. Which itself was twenty cubits by ten cubits or thirty-six feet by eighteen feet. And then the most holy place, which was two, ten cubits by ten cubits, a perfect square, or eighteen feet by eighteen feet. Now, this particular structure, these two rooms had a roof. Remember the outer portion had no roof, but this had a roof. And the roof was made of four different coverings. One was fine twined linen, another was cloth made of goat's hair. A third was ram skins that had been dyed red. And a fourth was the skins of badgers. So that's the description of the enclosure. I I I hope you can get an image of that in your mind. But i- if not, I will try in our next session to post again, uh some sort of graphics so that you can see it. Now this is a lot of material to take in. And I would expect you to remember it, but hopefully you'll remember some of the spiritual significance. And much of the spiritual significance, I've pointed out to you already as we talked about the courtyard just a little bit ago. But I want you to note the spiritual significance of three things. The base, the boards, and the bars. Let's deal with the base first. The the base was comprised of one hundred sockets of silver. Now remember that silver speaks of our redemption. Our salvation does not rest upon our efforts. It does not rest upon our good works. But our salvation rests upon the redeeming work of Jesus. That's what Peter tells us in first Peter, chapter one, verses eighteen and nineteen. Knowing that you were not redeemed with perishable things like silver or gold. From your futile way of life inherited from your forefathers. But with precious blood, as of a. As of a lamb unblemished and spotless, the blood of Christ. Romans, chapter eight, verses thirty one through thirty four, Paul writes. What then shall we say to these things? If God is for us, who is against us? He who did not spare his own son, but delivered him over for us all. How will he not also with him freely give us all things? Who will bring a charge against God's elect? God is the one who justifies. Who is the one who condemns? Christ Jesus is he who died, yes, rather who was raised, who is at the right hand of God. And who also intercedes for us. So we have a foundation. And our foundation is Jesus Christ. He's paid the price for us already. Do you remember the hymn that says, my hope is built on nothing less. Than Jesus' blood and righteousness. I dare not trust the sweetest frame, but wholly lean on Jesus' name. Catch the chorus, on Christ, the solid rock I stand. All other ground is sinking stands. So we have a base. But further than the base is the note the significance of the boards. Now, remember that I I told you. That there were forty eight boards, twenty on the door, twenty on the south and. Uh eight uh eight on. Uh on the west and including two corner boards. Nothing on the east, cause that was the opening, I said that wrong earlier. So what about these boards? These boards. Speak of Christ. In his perfect humanity and in his deity. The boards were made of imperishable wood. Covered in gold, Exodus twenty six. And verse fifteen says, then you shall make the boards for the tabernacle of acacia wood. Standing upright. So so catch this for for a moment. Each of these boards. Let me let me get back to where I gave you. The um. The boards were ten uh eighteen feet by three feet. So they stood upright, they're they're triangular in shape. So they're three feet wide, but they're eighteen feet tall. So this was not a low wall around the. The the the. Tabernacle itself. Because the boards were eighteen feet tall. Okay? Thirty thirty six feet. Uh I I misspoke, thirty six feet feet by eighteen feet. So they were thirty six feet wide and eighteen feet tall. So these were pretty big pieces of wood. Now, I said that they speak of Christ in his perfect humanity. But also his deity, remember the Applications Creed says. That he was very deuce and at very homo, he was truly God and truly man, that's in the Latin. But they also speak of us, we as believers. Who have been cut down, Second Peter, chapter one, verse four. We we read these words. For by these he has granted to us his precious and magnificent promises. So that by them you may become partakers of the divine nature. Having escaped the corruption that is in the world by lust. You see. Our right to be associated with the worship and the witness of God. Is in the fact that we stand on redemption ground. We have been cut down, but we stand on redemption ground. So we have there therefore to see to it that our feet are well fixed. In the sockets. Of silver. So that as Paul says in Ephesians, chapter four, verse fourteen. That we will cease to be like babies or children. Who are tossed here and there by waves and carried about by every wind of doctrine, by the trickery of men, by the craftiness, by craftiness and deceitful. Scheming. So the boards speak of Christ. Let's go on to the bars. Let's go into the bars and I think that's probably as far as we will get tonight. But the bars. There were fifteen bars. Five for each of the sides, north, south and west. There was a center bar that went from one end to the other. And the others were apparently half lengths. And they have symbolism, let's let's look at Exodus, chapter twenty six, verses twenty six and twenty nine. Then you shall make bars of acacia wood. Five for the boards of one side of the tabernacle. You shall overlay the boards with gold and make the rings of gold as holders for the bars. And you shall overlay the bars with gold. Now, so the bars were there and they had meaning. The bars speak of the the unifying work of the Holy Spirit. The unifying work of the Holy Spirit. So Ephesians, uh. Chapter two, verses twenty one and twenty two, we read these words, in whom the whole building being fitted together. Is growing into a holy temple in the Lord, the next verse says. In whom you also are being built together into a dwelling of God in the spirit. But then there's a what Paul says later on in Ephesians in chapter four, verse three. Being diligent to pursue to preserve the unity of the spirit in the bond of peace. So they speak of the unifying work of the Holy Spirit. But let's go a little bit deeper. I said there were five bars for each of the sides. And when we look at the five bars, we see a picture. Talked about this unifying work of the Holy Spirit, so now we're talking about the work of the Spirit. We see a picture of the fivefold ministry of the Holy Spirit, Ephesians four eleven. So Ephesians Ephesians four eleven. And he gave some as apostles and some as prophets and some as evangelists and some as pastors and teachers. You are very familiar with this, because we we did some some very in-depth teaching. On the fivefold ministry, you identified your fivefold gifts, some of you. And so these five bars represent that, now the first two bars. If you will represent the foundational ministry of the church. And that is in the apostles and prophets. So Ephesians, chapter two, verse twenty, uh says this. Having been built on the foundation of the apostles and prophets, Christ Jesus himself being the cornerstone. So that's what the first two of the five, then there's a middle bar. That represents the evangelist. Who goes into all the world to preach the gospel to every creature. Mark, chapter sixteen, verse fifteen. It says, and he said to them, go into all the world and preach the gospel to all creation. So that's three of the five. Now, if you remember the fivefold gifts, there's apostle, prophet, evangelist, there's two more. And the remaining two represent the pastor and the teacher. Because together, they perform the task. That Paul sets out in Ephesians, chapter four, verses twelve through thirteen. And there he writes. One more slide. For the equipment of the saints for the work of service, to the building up of the body of Christ. Until we all attain the unity of the faith and to the knowledge of the Son of God, to a mature man. To the measure of the stature which belongs to the fullness of Christ. So, that's the symbolism that we get from the base, the boards and the bars. So great significance here, this is where I'm going to stop tonight, next week when we come back to this. I will want to talk about the coverings, the the uh not the coverings, but the covered entrances. In a later subject, we'll get to the coverings. Now, this is a lot of material that I'm giving to you. Uh you can go back and watch this video over again if you'd like. To get this in greater detail, this is a lot to throw at you at one time. But again, we're talking about. The tabernacle foreshadowing the ministry of Jesus, this is not just the tabernacle, but the Old Testament. Is but shadows and types of Jesus, foreshadowing his ministry. And as we dig into it, we see it coming to the surface in so many different ways. One of the things that this should teach us is that we don't have a New Testament. Without the Old Testament, we don't have a new covenant without the old covenant. There are some Christians who don't see value in studying the Old Testament. Now, I'm not saying that we should all become Jewish and going back to adhering. To Jewish practices in that regard, but when we recognize that the New Testament. Is the fulfillment of the Old Testament. And that the Old Testament is foreshadowing what is yet to come. And that finds its fulfillment in Jesus, then to understand it best. We need to go back and study portions of the Old Testament. That will then give us fuller understanding of the teachings of Jesus himself. I pray that this is profitable for you. And that you will tune in with us next week. When we come together to study for this. Uh we're going to sh- go ahead, you'll probably have to press the arrow quite a bit, maybe about seven times uh on those slides. Uh to to get to um the giving slides. I I I wanna get you, give you the opportunity to give unto the Lord tonight. You know, giving is is a part of worship. And we don't wanna miss the opportunity for you to give, not to me, but to give to the Lord. And so, I offer you that opportunity right now. If you're a member of Kingdom Fellowship and you were not able to give your tithe on Sunday. This is a good time for you to do it now, whatever you do, you don't want to eat your seed. Uh where to bring first fruits unto the Lord, and so I wanna offer you that opportunity now. If you're not a member of this house, you're a member of a church uh somewhere else, we're not asking for your tithe. But it's always appropriate to uh plant a seed. To give a donation, to put it in more worldly terms, but to sow a seed, and the Bible tells us. That when you sow seed into good ground, and we believe that this ministry is in fact good ground. That it will spring up one hundred sixty thirty times beyond what you planted. We certainly understand that we can't beat God when it comes to giving, no matter how hard we try. If you're not a member of a church anywhere and you have been worshiping with us and studying with us and. Even though you're not resident with us, you're online with us, you feel like this is where you're being ministered to. We invite you to give your tithe to us and you most certainly can do so. So whether you're paying tithes or whether you're sowing seed, we have provided you ways that you can give online. You can give online, first of all, through the GiveLify app. GiveLify is an app that you can download onto your mobile device, onto your phone or to your iPad. And when you go into GiveLify to search for us, we are listed as Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center. Remember all four of those words, Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center. And then note, we are in Charlotte, North Carolina, that's for all of our friends. Who are not resident with us here in the greater metro line area. We've also uh made provision for you to be able to give. Through a secure PayPal portal, so you can go directly to PayPal. And you can find us in PayPal as Kingdom Fellowship Christian Center. And you can give through PayPal. Or many of you like to use Cash App and you can give using the Cash App. We are listed in Cash App as dollar sign Kingdom Fellows, that's dollar sign Kingdom Fellows. All one word, K I N G D L M F E L L O W S. And you can give to us that way. Whatever way you give, I invite you to give confidently and joyfully. Knowing that your gifts will advance the work of the kingdom of God. So let me say thank you in advance for your giving. And let you know that what you're you've done is set yourself up to receive a blessing from the Lord. So give right now, take this opportunity to give. Now I'd like to, before I close out, I'd like to pray for you. I don't know what it is that you are going through. I don't know what you are enduring. I do know that God knows all about it. There's nothing too hard for him. And so I wanna pray for you tonight. Maybe everything's going wonderful with you right now and you just wanna tell God thank you. Maybe there's some issues that you are contending with and you wanna ask God for direction and guidance. Maybe you're dealing with some bondage and you need deliverance. Maybe you're walking in lack. And you need provision. God is able. To do immeasurably more than all you can ask or imagine, according to his power that is at work within you. And so when we pray, we pray with that knowledge. We don't pray asking God, are the things that he has already said are his will in his word are his will? But instead, we pray according to his word and according to his will. Is it God's will that I be healed? Yes. Is it God's will that I prosper in all ways? Yes. Is it God's will that I would be delivered? Yes. Is it God's will that I would be set free? Yes. And we can pray and ask God for those things, the Bible says that we have not because we asked not. And then when we do ask, we ask with wrong motives. So let's come before the Lord confidently, believing that the one who made the promise. Is faithful to fulfill it, that's what the Bible says, that he is faithful to his word. To fulfill it. So let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, I come now on behalf of everyone within the sound of my voice. And for everyone who is watching by way of this live stream. I do bless you gracious God. For your goodness and your mercy demonstrated toward us. In that while we were yet sinners, you died for us. But you didn't remain dead, you rose again from the third day. And then you ascended into heaven, where even now you sit on the right hand of the throne of God. Lord, throughout your kingdom here on earth, believers are celebrating tonight. The beginning of a season called Lent. A season of introspection and preprepa- preparation. As we prepare to celebrate your resurrection. Lord, we are so grateful that you are not dead. We are so grateful that the tomb is empty and the cross is bare. We are grateful that you are interceding on our behalf. And with that knowledge and in the confidence that you hear us when we pray, we bow before you to bring to you our petitions. So, oh God, representing your people tonight, I pray for those that are suffering under the burden of sickness, whether it be COVID nineteen or whether it be some other malady. I know, oh God, that there is nothing that is too hard for you. There is no sickness that you cannot heal. There is no bondage that you cannot break. I come interceding on their behalf, oh God, asking that you would be gracious unto them, that you would show yourself mighty and strong in their situation, and heal them from the crown of their heads to the soles of their feet. Within this fellowship, oh God, I thank you for your healing power over Dr. Strange, and I ask you, oh God, to bring to full completion the good work that you've begun in her, and not just in her, but also in her husband. I pray that prayer from Mother Falls, and for everyone in our fellowship who may be suffering illness and sickness in any type of way. For Minister Ruth, who's suffering a little bit, uh, even this evening tonight. Lord, we bring them before you, trusting you, knowing what you are able to do, knowing that as you've done it for others, you can do it for them too. Well, I pray tonight for those in particular who are suffering under COVID nineteen. Lord, there are still people that are suffering. Even with the vaccine out there, oh God, there are people who have yet to receive it. And then there are those who have received it that are beginning to experience symptoms again. Lord, do you have the words of life? Speak those words, oh God, and break this scourge, we pray, in the name of Jesus. I pray for financial provision, not just for those who are of the recipient, of the receiving end of this prayer by way of hearing it, oh God, but I pray for provision for Kingdom Fellowship, that all of her bills would be paid, all of her needs would be met, that there would be more than enough in the storehouse to take care of our future as we follow your leading. We bless you, oh God, and we praise you, that you have great things in store for your people. We thank you that you have great things in store for us. Lord, open to us so that we may see what you have prepared for us. Direct us to where you would have us to be. Call us to where you would have us to go, and we bless you for it. We give you thanksgiving for the tent that we're in right now, but we acknowledge it to be just a tent, not a permanent dwelling, not a permanent address. And we thank you, oh God, that you opened the door for us to move to where you would have us to be. Lord, I give you praise for the opportunity to minister to this people. Lord, through the foolishness of teaching tonight, may your word well up into a spring of righteousness for your people, and may we all live more victoriously because of it. And I give you honor and glory and praise in Jesus' name. Amen. Well, I hope you received that prayer tonight. I'm delighted that you tuned in with us, and I invite you to join us again. We will be on the live stream at ten AM on Sunday morning. If you are in the greater Metro Atlanta area, we are open. And we have plenty of room where you can come and safely social distance, bring your face mask, and join us in our worship of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We are located at twenty-nine twenty-five East Independence Boulevard, Charlotte, North Carolina, in the Jones Building on the second floor. You can park on this, on the, on the street next to the building or in the parking lot behind it. Come around the front, to the front door, up the stairs or the elevator, and someone will direct you to our worship center. We hope that you will come. I want you to know you have my personal invitation to come and to be with us as we worship our living Lord. I hope you'll come, and I look forward to greeting you when you do come. If you can't come, join us on the live stream. Now, one last thing, for you and for your friends, if you missed this live stream, or you know of those who missed it live, you can still pick it up and replay it on Facebook, or you can run on over to YouTube and go to my YouTube channel, which is listed simply as Bishop Jim Logan. Look for this face, and you'll be sure you have the right channel. When you get there, be sure to subscribe and to make it a favorite. And in Facebook, like it and share it. Thank you again for being with us tonight. On behalf of Lady Cece and all of our leaders and members, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I wish you a good night. May the Lord bless you and keep you in Jesus' name. Amen.